Good evening. Welcome to the July 10, 2023 Anacortes City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Hoagland, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath. Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Okay, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, on to item number three is announcements and committee reports. Just a couple of announcements here. I'd like to thank Park staff, but certainly Public Works and every, a lot of staff involvement for Fourth of July events last week, parade, fireworks, and cleaning up afterwards. So again, thanks to the city staff for that work. Went off quite well. And next week, we will present the award winners for the parade, best marching group and float. Also, thanks to the Park staff primarily for Great Kids Are Best event on Saturday. There were several hundred, if not more, participants in that one. Also, just an interesting note, the Washington State Office of Financial Management has released its population estimates for Anacortes. And so that's just for this year. They have to estimate it in between census, eighteen thousand and twenty, eighteen zero two zero, up one forty from last year's estimate. Again, those are the in-between numbers for the actual census. And then I would like to embarrass one of our great directors here, Mr. Henry Hash. This was his last week here, and I'd like to thank him for his time in Anacortes. We appreciate all the projects you move forward. So, thanks, Henry. And we can still ask him hard questions for tonight's meeting. There might be a couple of things on here for him. Okay, next up is the Fiber Committee report.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
The Fiber Department surpassed a really cool milestone just in the last couple of days. Excuse me. We surpassed two thousand installations, customers on net, and as of this afternoon, two thousand and five customers on net. So congratulations to the Fire, the entire department. Thank you so much for all the, the great work. Additionally, we have surpassed the thirty-five percent take rate threshold in all of our geographies across the community. So, and including surpassed fifty percent take rate in the original Old Town sort of trial zones. The other zones are well into the forties with Guimas at, I think it surpassed thirty-seven percent there just recently. So congratulations again. That's really good for, for the overall long-term business model. Couple other items. There was a service outage on the evening of June seventeenth. It was a problem with our upstream service provider. You know, we have redundant paths leaving the city and getting out toward, you know, essentially the I-5 corridor. But from there, essentially, a single service provider and an outage occurred somewhere south of Mount Vernon. The department is working on bringing on a second upstream service provider that will provide geographic redundancy essentially all the way down to Seattle where then, like, the sort of larger internet kind of explodes from there. On the EDA grant and construction for the EDA geographies, currently basically in process with EDA, and they're targeting, looks like we're targeting trying to break ground in October of this year. And actually, for now, I think that's, that's it.
All right. Great. And again, a really important milestone, two thousand customers is really important. But of course, I remind the council that we won't, we won't rest on this. We're getting great customer feedback from the service that Anacortes Access Fiber is providing, but we want to keep those customers for the long term because, you know, I've talked to you all about, you know, we're going to have to wrap up this construction debt coming up real soon. But in order to pay that back, we'll have to maintain that great customer service. So again, congratulations to the Fiber Team, Ms. Hsu, and your whole team for getting, getting to that important milestone. But we know we still have that last area to go.
And apologies, I was so, I was so excited about the number.
Yeah.
Forgot to mention, Mr. Walters, Ms. Hubick, and myself were in attendance from council.
That's a, it's an exciting milestone. All right, next up is the Finance Committee.
Take it away, Bruce.
All right. Mr. McDougal.
Finance Committee met last week. It was myself, Mr. Walters, and she, actually Chief Floyd from the Police Department as, as guests, and Mr. Luderman from Facilities and Fleet. And basically, it was a significant discussion around police vehicles. And basically, we're bringing on new officers with the recently passed levy lift. And we were discussing like number of vehicles to bring online. Do we bring on like one per officer or? And also, we're dealing with our very long lead times for police vehicles as well as fire. And so how to kind of like time things appropriately with, you know, understanding that we may not bring on all five or six officers all at once. So I think it's going to be kind of ongoing discussion. There's going to be more, more to it. Checking notes here. Also, we, we had some discussion about electric vehicle options, and we noted that we've got, that basically, public service vehicles, police type vehicles are, there are EV options coming out next year. I don't know if we are going to be a first adopter for that sort of thing. I think, again, more discussion as I, there's going to be a certain amount of, I guess, you know, so some, some testing time and, and to see how, how the vehicles perform in that kind of, that kind of role, that kind of workload. That's what I have for, for Finance Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I'll tag on to that. We suggested that Public Works and Finance bring this question to full counsel as soon as possible, the question of what it is we're doing with police vehicles, how many, gas versus electric. Public Works needs an authorization to order these police vehicles from City Council because it exceeds the mayor's authorization. And so we talked about the possibility of a resolution that would provide a one-time authorization. The order window is very short. It's a single day. So if, if, if that's the course that we need to take, then we need to have all that lined up well in advance. But the larger policy question, you know, gas versus electric is something, but from a finance and resource perspective, not buying vehicles at all is a better answer. And if we want to take that course, we need to decide as a council well in, in advance of that order deadline. So we recommended that that question come forward to us as soon as possible so we could have that discussion.
Got it. Thanks. Next up is Public Works Committee. Mr. Walters.
We talked about a number of things, including some things that are on the agenda tonight. We had a leak east of the Dwayne Berenson Bridge on the south side of SR twenty on the thirty-six inch line. And I won't go into that in detail because we're talking about that later on on the agenda. We did talk about the outfall, the sewage treatment plant outfall. Public Works is going to put it out as one project. As you might recall, previously, it was separated into upland and marine portions. We previously had them separated because we thought we could do permitting faster, and we were trying to hit the fish window. However, that all got scuttled with discovery of potential archaeological remains, and we've now worked through that process. There are a couple of benefits of a single contract. Contractors won't be in each other's way. They can schedule the work that is most efficient for them. We'll have one contract and one contractor to work with instead of two. And because it will then be a bigger project, we will likely attract more competitors for the work. So the committee was all very complimentary of all those things. We did just get a landscape architect on board to finalize the park design. As you might recall, there is a park component of this where the outfall hits the water. And so that's Record McLeod. They'll be doing that work, and we intend to include the park design as part of the bid package. And the committee recommended that they engage the Parks Department and talk about how to engage the public in that process of designing the park. Former water treatment plant demolition is coming along. Contractors applied for permits from Ecology. Should get them in a few weeks. And the contractor is committed to substantial completion of that demolition by the end of the year. And then finally, we talked about the Commercial Avenue Roundabout because we'd requested some update on where that process is. And there are questions of design remaining to be solved. There are also questions of right-of-way acquisition remaining to be resolved. And we have some input, but I think generally, we think that sometime in the near future, that needs to come to full counsel to try to figure out especially what we're going to do with respect to acquisition of right-of-way. And then finally, we talked a little bit about financing, including financing the pavement management plan going forward and starting in 2024. And the corollary to that is how we're going to finance the remaining city portion of the Commercial Avenue Roundabout. There are a lot of numbers in that that you probably won't recall if I rattle them off right now. So suffice to say, that question also needs to come forward to us when we talk about the Roundabout design and the right-of-way acquisition. So that is, I think, all that we talked about in Public Works Committee. We didn't have a planning committee meeting. We canceled that, but we were scheduled to talk about the Creative District. The, the Anacortes Arts Festival will be bringing forward a resolution establishing a Creative District for next week's agenda. It includes First Street to Eleventh Street and L. Avenue to Cap San Amorina. The boundaries of the Creative District are really the operative part of that resolution. And so we will try to talk about, we in the planning committee will try to talk about that offline prior to that meeting, but also it'll be before us next week. And then finally, I had a meeting of the North Star Project Housing Work Group. As you might recall, the North Star Project is the countywide effort, along with various cities, to coordinate on housing issues countywide. A big component of our discussion today was about the countywide planning policies, which inform how our comprehensive plans are put together. And there was some question about whether or not the county, meaning the county generally, both the county as a government and the individual cities and other stakeholders within it, should revise the countywide planning policies as part of our 2025 comprehensive plan updates. And I, I think the consensus of this housing work group was absolutely, we need to. The countywide planning policies contain the growth allocations for the whole county. So at a minimum, Appendix One and the countywide planning policies have to get updated to allocate the growth. But also, we have a new GMA goal, state mandated goal for climate, and there have been big changes to the existing GMA goal for housing. And so those should be reflected in updates to the countywide planning policies. Then we also talked a little bit about housing choice vouchers and the Skagit Housing Authority, which holds on to a number of those housing choice vouchers, Section Eight vouchers and other special vouchers, and how we might encourage the Skagit Housing Authority to make those available so that one hundred percent of those vouchers are being utilized. The outcome of this most recent discussion in the Housing Work Group will be a white paper that will go to the leadership team of the North Star Project, which is city mayors and county commissioners. And we should have that maybe in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Any other announcements and committee reports that I missed? All right, next is item three E, which is Planning Commission Appointment. This is an action item. And I would, first of all, I'd like to thank Jack Curtis for his service on the Planning Commission. He's now serving on the school board. And I'd like to present my recommendation for appointment to the Planning Commission, which is Paul Ryan. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read his information in the packet. He is here in the back of the room. Raise your hand so council can see you. Hi, Paul. And, and again, this will be filling the remainder of Jack Curtis's term ending on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Ask council for motion and confirmation.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Still moved?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Carter, and to appoint Paul Ryan to the Planning Commission. Additional discussion? We can do this by voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Paul, for agreeing to serve on the Planning Commission. A number of us have served on that, and you get paid in big paper clips. So congratulations. All right, next up is item four, which is Public Comment. And this is an opportunity for anybody to comment to the City Council anything that is not on our agenda. And that would be, so there's opportunities to comment on a number of items that are starred on our agenda, but I've got one person signed up, Patty Petit. And you're already making your way up here. So you know the drill. But you can just say your name and where you live and, and make sure the group, blue or green light is on, the little square or... Lights on and you're ready to go.
Thank you. You, either you've been behaving or I've been slipping. I haven't been up here for a while. Hi, I'm Patty Petit. I live in town. I have two things on my agenda tonight. The first thing is a friendly reminder. When I looked through this week's packet, I saw so many accounts payable going to what I call the Big River. The Big River is Patty speak for Amazon. And many of those items were office supplies or DVDs. I, I, I'm losing sleep thinking that we're getting boxes of paper clips driven to town. So we have a lot of good stores in town. We have this new Downtown Alliance. I, I'm just encouraging the city to be good stewards of our money and our community. I had a business here for thirty years, and anything you can do helps. And we all know that money circulated in town snowballs. So that's my friendly reminder. Mr. Young was so good about reminding us during COVID, but I thought it was time again. And the second thing is, we're halfway through the year. And believe me, I have no agenda in asking this question, and I have the utmost respect for all of you, what you do, your business, your life, your health, your families, your vacations. But I would like some clarity about council's regulations regarding attendance. Is there a limit on absences? Is there a limit on numbers of time a council member can zoom in? And are there any repercussions for going over the limit? Are these rules, are these guidelines? I know this has been discussed a few years ago, and I'm vague, and I'm asking for clarity. And again, thank you all. I appreciate your service.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And we can make sure to try to publish those rules. We, we do have those. All right. Anybody, I don't have anybody else signed up. Anybody else want to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay. I will move on to item five, which is our Consent Agenda, items A, B, and C. Counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Move to approve Consent Agenda items A through C.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve Consent Agenda on items A, B, and C. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're on to item number six, which is Other Business. First up is six A, Community Action of Skagit County. It's a quarterly update. It's a presentation, and Ms. Hsu will introduce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the audience. I just wanted to remind us that we entered into an agreement with Community Action for the calendar year 2023 to have a satellite office and services here in Anacortes. Community Action also agreed that they would provide us with quarterly updates, and I know that I've looked at the, the information in preparation for tonight's meeting, and they've been very responsive to the questions and the feedback from the, the first quarterly update that we had earlier this year at the end of March. So with no further ado, I'm pleased to introduce Sandy Finney, who's the Division Director with Community Action of Skagit County, and she also has some additional staff that will be here sharing information as well.
All right, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, council members. Thanks for having us here again. I, my name is Sandy Finney, and I'm a resident of Anacortes for the past fourteen years. And when I began to prepare this, I was thinking, oh, this is a program update, just to let you know where we are. And I have a tendency to kind of just get into the weeds and be like, all right, what are the numbers? What's happening? And then I realized, wait a minute, I should take a minute before I jump in to just kind of give a reminder of our vision and mission in case there are any of those in the audience or on Zoom or listening to the recording later who might want to know. So Community Action of Skagit County has a vision that, our vision is a community in which everyone works together to end poverty in Skagit County. And our mission is to stabilize lives and equip people to meet their goals and build a stronger, more equitable Skagit County. And one of the questions that we've had over, for a long time, is what does stabilizing really mean? So for us, that really is focusing on housing, food, and basic needs. So you can remember those three, those three things, housing, food, and basic needs. And for equipping, equipping people to meet their goals or exit poverty, that's really education, employment, and financial stability. So one of the things we hear a lot is like, oh, wow, Community Action does so much. We also hear, oh, Community Action does too much. Kind of the same thing. But the reason is because all of these things are really interconnected, and you can't just hit one of those things when you're working with somebody to stabilize them and equip them to exit poverty. So I wanted to just reiterate that because that's so important to the work that we're doing. And one of the reasons that we are making such efforts to come to Anacortes is because we recognize that providing better access, not just to one service, but to all the services that can really make an impact in those six areas is what's so important. And that's one of the reasons why we want so badly to be able to, to, to not just be here as an institution in Anacortes, but also work with all the other institutions that are trying to make an impact on people's lives here in the community. So that is where I wanted to start, just to reiterate that important point. And I'm going to introduce my colleagues in just a moment who joined me. A couple other quick updates. One is on space, and I had really hoped to be here today saying, all right, we're in our new space. This is happening. We're not there yet. We're trying. The delay with the reconstruction of the Wilson Hotel has caused a delay in our being able to move into the original place at the Olson Building. And because of that, we don't know what the timeline is, and so I've begun to work with other partners to see if there's another space that might be more suitable for us. We're working things out. I'm talking with Brian Clark at the Anacortes Housing Authority, talking with Island Health. I may approach the school district, looking at the house that the Anacortes Family Center was in temporarily. So there's a number of different options. We're going to work something out so that we can be here five days a week permanently. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that if you have any. One of the things I wanted to share is that we just recently got a, found out that we got a grant from WASDA, the Washington State Department of Transportation, to be able to buy a fleet of vehicles. We're also now in the process of looking at whether we might be able to have some electric vehicles, really to address what is a pretty serious transportation problem for people who don't have transportation access in Skagit County. What's exciting is that at least one of those cars will be based here in Anacortes, which will be really nice because I know that there's been some challenges when it comes especially to people needing to get to and from medical appointments at Island Health, and we'd love to be able to partner with the hospital on making that work. I do have to put a plug in here to say that one of the things that helps us make that work is volunteers. And so on my job description, there's other duties as assigned, and volunteer recruitment happens to be one of those. So if you know anybody who has an interest in that, let me know, and I'll pass them on to the appropriate person. The other, the next item I wanted to talk about was North Star, and Mr. Walters already addressed what, what North Star is. But for those who are on Zoom or in the audience who aren't familiar, it's really this effort between the county and the cities of Burlington, Mount Vernon, Anacortes, and Seidra-Woolley to better align resources in order to address behavioral health issues and the homelessness challenges that are related. And of course, Mayor Miller sits on the leadership team with the other commissioners, or with the other mayors and county commissioners. And the project also put together an Advisory Council, which is comprised of representatives from many key governmental and non-governmental institutions in the county. I was asked to sit on that Advisory Council and have been participating since its inception last year. And I have found significant value in being able to connect with other key players in this countywide effort to be able to align these services. And just in really brainstorm about what are the needs we have and how can we think outside the box about solving some of these problems? So I'm happy to be a part of that effort. And as we at Community Action are thinking through what we can do to improve and to serve the county as a whole and Anacortes as well, you know, we're also making sure that we know that our, what we're doing is aligned with the vital conditions with the Nor, which the North Star Project is framing its workaround. This idea that none of these pieces of the social determinants of health can really be solved individually. They are all very much connected, and it's not about, you know, providing emergency services, you know, just one time. It's about saying, how can we look at the whole picture so that we're not only addressing things as they come up, but also preventing them and creating an environment in which people can thrive? And I'm going to do a quick data update, and then I'm going to introduce my colleagues. As far as data, I did not include the demographic data because they look very similar to they did, to what they did last quarter. But I did want to draw attention to the fact that we're continuing to offer care coordination services here in Anacortes, as well as working with people that our street outreach program and Recovery Navigator Program are contacting. You can see that we had an increase in the number of people in Anacortes served by the Recovery Navigator Program, and my colleague Stephen can address that as well. And then I think the most significant change here is you can see that there's a huge change in the number of Anacortes residents receiving assistance from a resource center. We haven't yet broken that out because we haven't gotten our space available yet, but essentially, between quarter one and quarter two, that's a very large increase in the number of people getting immediate resource center services. Other than that, the numbers were pretty standard and pretty much the same from the previous quarter. Okay, I'm going to hand it over to two of my colleagues.
Mayor Miller.
Yep.
And Mr. Young.
Thank you. Ms. Finney.
Yes.
Right. Just, I'm a little curious, you know, I, I've long ago served on the Community Actions Board, and it was right after I moved here to town. It's been an absolute delight. I know the work that you do across, I know the effort to do work here in Anacortes. You already have been, but you know, and I noticed that the numbers are increasing and, but what was the, I thought, I know that you were planning to be in the Olson Building, but wasn't there a temporary location?
Yes, our temporary location was at the, has been at the Anacortes Family Center. So we've been at the Anacortes Family Center. They've been great hosts. Their space needs are changing, and so right now, we, we were in an office, and then we've, we've had to be in their conference room for a while.
Right.
And that has worked out to have a presence in Anacortes, but it's been, and it's been nice to improve our communication with them, too. What's been a hindrance is that we haven't been able to do the outreach. We'd like to be able to advertise our presence and build up... be able to advertise our presence and build up a, a location and a place where people can more easily drop in.
Yeah, I think, you know, just in hearing that, but I wanted that clarity out there, too, but I, I think it's so important to show just how much need is out there, and that both entities are working vigorously to help people and to move forward, so I do understand that. I just wanted that clarity to understand.
Absolutely.
And are, how, is there, are there places you're further exploring that you think may come to fruition for the short term?
For the short term, I'm hoping, my hope is what we can do is at least move into the building that's across the street from the Anacortes Family Center, where they were temporarily while their building was being built. And if we can be there for a temporary period of time, minimum three months, maximum maybe a year and a half, or at least until the Olson Building reconstruction has been done, and I know Brian Clark is giving an update on that at the HACs Committee on Wednesday, which I won't be able to be at, but the idea is if we could have a temporary place before we can move into that building more permanently, that would be my ideal situation.
Okay, thank you. Let us know how we can help.
Absolutely, thank you, I appreciate it.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters, and then Mr. McDougal.
Another data question, follow-up. The Street Outreach Program and the Recovery Navigator Program, one or both of those, you receive funding from, I think, North Sound ACH? Did I get that right?
I'm.
Ah, okay. We'll make a note about that. But I understand that there's a cap on the number of individuals that that funding supports for participation in the program. What proportion, well, what is that cap, and then what proportion are here, right here in Anacortes?
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Simmons to answer that, who, Stephen is our Street Outreach Program Manager, and he'll be able to answer that in more detail, and also share a story from Anacortes with you as well. And after that, we'll turn it over to Dulce Vasquez Cruz, who also has a story to share and information about the point in time count, which I understand there are questions on, so.
Mr. McDougal, did you want to wait or do your question now?
I can wait.
Okay.
I'll be right.
Thanks.
All right, cool. Yeah, so just one of the first things I noticed on that data slide was that we served 23 folks with Street Outreach and four folks with Recovery Navigator Program in quarter one. And then in quarter two, we served 21 folks with Street Outreach and six folks with Recovery Navigator Program. So it looks like two of our Street Outreach folks, or three of our Street Outreach folks kind of graduated into Recovery Navigator Program, but it's, it looks that we're currently serving about 27 individuals here in Anacortes. To your question, the amount of folks that are served by RMP is tied to the amount of case managers that we have. So right now, we have three case managers, they can have up to 25 individuals on their caseload, and so that leaves about 75 clients. You know, and we would, of course, you know, once, once those folks are up to capacity, I'd be hoping to hire more, you know, so the funding is pretty much tied to just like, what, what is the need in the community? The legislature is very, very motivated to see Recovery Navigator Programs take root and spread throughout all the counties. They've sunk a ton of money into this. I don't know if folks are familiar with the Recovery Navigator Program, but just super quick, you know, there was the Blake Decision, they got rid of the simple possession statute, bunch of people got out of prison and stuff, and then they did a temporary misdemeanor statute, and in that law, it said that you have to offer treatment three times before you seek prosecution. Recovery Navigator Program was instituted in every county in order to make those like meaningful offers of treatment for people that are unhoused with SUD, mental health, dual diagnosis, folks that just have like impossibly complex circumstances for their day-to-day life, you know, folks that, if you hand them a flyer that says where all the SUD agencies are, it's going to be really hard for them to make it there. You know, and then recently, they came up with a more permanent gross misdemeanor statute with the new crime of using in public, and the Recovery Navigator Program is still there, entrenched with more dollars and with more sort of drive to work directly with the courts and with police on pre-arrest diversion. So some more of those developments are hopefully coming for the community. We're really excited about that. You know, a couple of stories, first one, just this Saturday, I was at the County Connect event that Skagit Public Health put on, and I saw a gentleman that, you know, last time I saw him was on T Avenue. He's a Western Washington University graduate, and you know, through working with AFC, he found housing at Summer, at the new Somerset Apartments, all the way down at the end of College Way in Mount Vernon, if anybody remembers where Somerset, Somerset Greenhouses were, so that was really exciting. And then our case manager out here, Elise, sent me a story about a woman who was pregnant and went to like a detox and treatment agents, a treatment program at Swedish, and now that she has had the baby, she's sort of just, you know, resting and healing, and then she will be moving on to another treatment agency that allows her to have her child. She'll do a total of six months and then be transferred into some recovery housing, and her plan is to work on her GED, get back into college, and, and go from there. So, you know, we're, we're out here, people are making step forward. You know, when you look at, when you look at just the problem as a whole, it can seem like nobody's making any progress, but you know, when you know the individuals, you do see, you do see progress, so. Any questions about Street Outreach?
Any questions for outreach? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. And Mr. McDougal.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you all for coming out and presenting to us. I just have another quick question on the numbers. The 23 households that were added to the housing interest pool, is that for the six-month period, or is that like Q1 or Q2?
That's for the quarter.
It is for the quarter, okay. And do you have a sense for, is that number like, kind of, is it trending up, trending down, basically flat?
That is a perfect segue for me to introduce Dulce Vasquez Cruz, who I'll bring up now. She's our Resource Center Manager and oversees also the coordinated entry, which brings people in to put them on the interest pool, and as you know, we're also beginning to implement care coordination. So as I've mentioned before, instead of people just being put in the interest pool, now we're making this effort to make sure they're also getting connected with case management at the same time. So Dulce is the really, the person to be able to answer that question much better than I can. So thanks for being here.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dulce Vasquez Cruz, and I'm the Resource Center Manager at Community Action, and I oversee the Resource Center in Mount Vernon and Anacortes, and I oversee the workflow for the coordinated entry system. And I'd also like to introduce Gina, who is our Care Specialist Lead. Gina Peterson is an Anacortes resident, and she is the one that's stationed out here in Anacortes twice a week at the Anacortes Family Center. And I do want to touch on the point, point in time count and the housing interest pool numbers, but before, I want to touch on the Anacortes success stories. Because we have been here in Anacortes, we want to share the success that we've had and that we will continue to have. So we have, we were, we had the pleasure to help this lifelong resident, senior citizen here in Anacortes, and they were faced with potentially getting an eviction notice, and we were able to work alongside that senior's support system and find alternative methods to avoid that eviction notice, and that was getting her connected to our Energy Assistance Program, getting her connected to medical insurance, and also give her some information on low-income cellphone access. And all of this is done, this is only some of the work that's being done with the Care Coordination Service Model that we're taking on, and, and I believe that, I do want to give credit to the other service providers that were, we all have these conversations with our clients. But we were able to avoid this senior citizen from facing eviction. And I do have some numbers on the point in time count. So we were able to survey a total of 225 individuals that stated that they were literally homeless here in Skagit County, and out of those, 147 stated that they're from Skagit County. And out of those numbers, we had about 20% from Anacortes that stated that they are literally homeless here in Anacortes. And with that in mind, we also, there is a trend going up of folks that are experiencing homelessness in our county, and that's due to the rent increases, that's, that plays a huge part in it, and it, you know, it's really important that we seek intervention at an early time in order to help folks avoid eviction. Any questions on the point in time count?
No.
And so our, our goal for our Anacortes Resource Center, like we have in all of our resource centers throughout Skagit County, is to make sure that we have our programs accessible to those in the community. That includes our WIC assistance, Support of Employment, Senior and Disabled, and Energy Assistance alongside with other programming services. We really want to make sure that we are connecting with folks and we're getting them connected to as many resources as we can. And we look forward to our permanent stay here in Anacortes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Just, you know, I'm curious about the food pantries, you know, just so much is happening around the globe, really, in need for food assistance, food uncertainty, and I, I know that that's a big part, one of the many, many services that you bring forward. But have you seen that rise? Is it continuing? Has it stabilized? You know, I understand that there were just a number of people everywhere trying to get that assistance, and you know, looking at Skagit County, I just, I guess my heart says that it's probably increasing, and that's the need that we have as not only cities but people to try to reach out to help others. Is that something, that trend continuing to grow up?
That trend is continuing to grow. We saw it, well, during COVID, I don't want to say that COVID is done, but during that period, there was an increase of that Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, that the amount increased, and now that it decreased, it really affected a lot of households. So we are seeing a lot of households coming in and seeking assistance with food. And we've been, we have our Food Distribution Center that's located out in Seidra-Woolley that we work really closely with, and we make sure to have our pantries full with at least the necessities that a household might need, whether they're housed or unhoused.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dulce, and thank you, Stephen. I just wanted to wrap up with one last sentence and just say, thank you for your attention and thank you for your good questions, and if you do have any other questions or things that you'd like us to present at future quarterly updates, we're happy to include those in there, too. And so please just go ahead and let me know. I know for me, I am very excited to be able to get to that point where we can bring some of our other services here. Our Support of Employment has just been kind of skyrocketing, and we know that that's something that could be really useful here. And we're excited to know also with our Energy Assistance, which is something we serve many, many households with here in Anacortes, in the fall, when we do our big energy and utility assistance outreach event, we'll be doing that as a, a much larger sort of really addressing, bringing, trying to bring in a lot of seniors and disabled individuals as well to make sure that they know not just of that Energy Assistance, but also other services that might be available to them as well. So we're excited to be getting up 100% here in Anacortes. So thank you again for your time, appreciate it.
And sorry, before you get down, I have to ask if any members of the public want to make a comment, because we did have it on the agenda. Okay, all right, sorry, thank you, Sandy, appreciate it. All right, next up is item 6B, interlocal agreement with Samish Indian Nation for funding of public street improvements for the Early Learning Center. And Ms. Swetnam, I think, is going to be setting this up, but I know council has seen a version of this maybe a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago. Going to give you an update. And this is a discussion item with possible action.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council, and members of the audience. I have to apologize, I'm at the tail end of a cold, as you can probably hear, so I'm going to do my best. So this is interlocal 22213, that is for the city to work with the Samish Indian Nation on street improvements adjacent to their Early Learning Center on D Avenue. So the background here is that the interlocal will allow for the improvement of streets, public streets adjacent to the Early Learning Center. Under the agreement, the city will perform all design and construction work to improve those streets, and the nation will reimburse all of those expenses using federal tribal funding. So as you may remember, this might sound familiar, this agreement actually came to council in January of this year, and it was approved, but after council approved it, there were some additional changes requested by the nation to clarify funding. One example is that because the work is going to be reimbursed through grant funding, the nation wanted to make sure that the city was using the proper procurement guidelines in selecting contractors, and so there was some confusion about that that needed to be clarified in the agreement. So since this was approved in January, the clarifications have been made to the procurement rules, there were some clarifications that were made to the funding provisions, and those changes have all been discussed and reviewed with staff, and, and we're recommending approval. Just as a reminder, I think Steve Lang originally presented this, and so he could make sense of these maps that were attachments, but these are the improvements that are intended. I know that Director Hash is at the back of the room for his last council meeting, and so if there are questions about the specific work that's going to be done under the agreement, I, I know he's available to answer those questions as well. But staff is recommending approval of the agreement so we can get started on this work. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Walters.
One other change since the prior document was approved is deletion of the work on C Avenue, which is a
That's correct.
An avenue that doesn't currently exist. I mean, C Avenue does, but that segment between 16th and 17th doesn't currently exist. And so I think I made a comment at the time that maybe we don't need to create new pavement and new roads to maintain where we don't have to. So I don't have any objection to deletion of that from the description of the work. However, it wasn't in your summary.
I apologize for that.
Is there anything else that wasn't in your summary?
There, there were some, there were some negotiated changes that were not substantive, so I think that's the only other significant change that's noteworthy. I mean, there were some, you know, we, we've added some, some reference to the lag manual, which I think are encompassed in the points that I've raised with the, with the addition that you brought up.
I'm, thank you, I'm not concerned about that. I did note that the, the drawing of 16th Street between D and, I guess it would be B, previously included a small roundabout, a traffic calming device, I think just maybe right where the cul-de-sac is now, because again, 16th Street doesn't exist all the way to D Avenue right now. And that small roundabout, or whatever, whatever it's called, the traffic calming device, because it's really not the size of a roundabout, isn't in the revised document. So I'm wondering what our thinking is there, and I don't think this is a question for you.
No, and that's why we didn't expect our city attorney to have to answer these questions. Mr. Lang's working his way up, and he can go ahead and, and answer some of those.
He's at the front, there you go.
Yeah. That's why we've got the Public Works Team standing by. Mr. Lang.
There you go. Yeah, actually, at the top of the
Yeah, actually, at the top of the, the drawing there, you'll see the traffic circle that's intended to be there.
Okay, so-
Yeah.
So that's what that circle is there?
Yeah. And C Avenue is taken off because it's not in the road network, although in the future, they are trying to get that in their road network, so that way if there is traffic congestion in this area, and the solution is to put this road in, then they have the ability to go for grant fundings at a later date.
So B Avenue would thus be the location that people would make a use-
That's C and C Avenue.
I mean, on this map, you're showing it at B Avenue, right?
Nope, that's C.
That's C?
So D is at the bottom of the page, and C would be the next one to the, to the west.
So, but we're not planning to construct C Avenue?
Correct.
So this map doesn't really describe what we're planning to construct?
No, no, this is, this is just for the grant funding purposes. So when we get more into the details of the design through the request for qualifications for the design, then, then we'll get it more dialed in as to what it's going to look like based on the agreement.
Okay. I, I, I don't really anticipate, you know, a huge amount of traffic from this new facility, but any traffic that does show up here, assumedly turns off of D Avenue, travels down New 16th Street, parks in those parking spaces that are shown there on the right side of the diagram, drops off their kids, and then what? Will they go back to D Avenue?
I would like to say they would go back to D Avenue. I, I anticipate that they'll probably go right up B and, you know, if they're heading east or westbound. It's kind of hard to tell what people are going to do. That's why I had C Avenue in there to begin with, just because it was a, it was an option. So they, they either go to D or they go to B to, to get out.
So if they go to B, I guess I have some concerns because it's not a well-developed street.
That's going to be the, as this grows, what are going to be the needs in that area.
And do we need the round, so, to clarify, do you expect to build the roundabout as part of this project, that, or the traffic calming circle?
I was going to put that, I was going to put one in, yeah. That was-
At, at B?
No, at C.
At C?
Yeah. That, that's where it's always been.
Sorry, right. C is what's shown unlabeled here on the diagram. Okay. So what would that look like without C Avenue actually constructed?
It'll just be a little, little traffic circle that somebody could actually turn around and come back to D.
Would it exist basically within the footprint of the paved cul-de-sac that's there right now?
Pretty close.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not going to be taking any right-of-way. We can fit that within the existing right-of-way.
Okay. I don't perceive that to be critical for this project, but it is critical for testing that device on our street network and being able to maybe deploy it elsewhere.
Yeah, and I think that's a, a good location to do that. And additionally, knowing that the neighborhood there is pretty vocal, you know, it'll, it'll be a nice traffic calming measure for that neighborhood.
And maybe it will discourage people from going into the neighborhood, instead going back out to D.
We would hope.
We'll see. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thanks. Mr. Lang, before you go, the first map that we have of these, that has 16th Street cul-de-sac on it, it's two before the one we were just looking at. Yeah, the one on the left. Thanks. So those new monuments that are shown at the center of the intersections and one in the cul-de-sac, is that like a infrastructure thing?
Well, the one in the cul-de-sac is a leftover. When I went through and did the engineering estimate, and, you know, there's been some sales of property in that area and, and trying to master plan what that's going to look like, so I took what the intersections are, the cul-de-sacs at 20th, 19th, 18th, and just took them down the hill. And, and that's why you see that, that outline the way you do. So when I did the estimate, I just did the curb extensions and kind of revised it at the, at the last minute. And so when, when you see that new monument in the middle of that gray area, that's just a, kind of a leftover.
Okay, so those new monuments refer to the improvements that are around them on D?
Yeah, they're, they're survey monuments that you see in the middle of the road that, that define the intersection.
Okay.
And, and there isn't any at that intersection. We have some at 17th, but I don't believe we have any at 15th and 16th, so that'll just give us better monumentation for, for that area.
Okay, so what is the monument exactly? I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Well, so that's what the, the properties are based off of. You have blocks, and you have center lines of roads. The monuments define that block, and so when people come into survey, you can set up on those monuments.
Oh, I see. Okay, so it's not like, it's not like a thing that affects-
No, 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 no. It's, it's, it's basically just a-
Gotcha.
-a small, round monument lid.
Okay.
And when you look inside, there's a little square concrete with a round brass, and it has a little marker in it for, for surveyors to use.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yep.
Just curious. I also wanted to echo Mr. R, Mr. Walters's statement about testing out the traffic calming circle, and I know we talked about it, at least at Public Works Committee meetings, about doing that potentially on Kansas and other areas, and just want to underscore that we're serious about, well, I'm serious about this, moving forward, trying it out, so thank you.
Yeah, we're going to try it out. We're serious.
All right, any other questions for this project?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I also note that you show a school zone on here. That would be a new school zone that doesn't currently exist, right?
Yeah, so the, the scope that kind of developed out of this originally from the 16th Street, it kind of expanded into the, the tribe wanting to have that look like a school zone. And so, yeah, we're going to be trying to make it look like a school zone, so people actually will slow down through that section of D Avenue.
I'm somewhat skeptical of people slowing for school zones in reality, but it's good to try, and it will also benefit the fields that are there on the east side. I just want to clarify, though, that where you show something like the extension of 16th Street to the east there, you're, you're not actually proposing that as part of this, right?
Correct.
The scope ends it at D Avenue?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's, there's been some neighbors that have come in at 16th. There's two driveways that are right there, and, and out of that with the, the curb extension that you see on the, on the left-hand side at the bottom, with the sidewalk going through there, there's actually a driveway entrance, so we can take those two driveways and combine them into that one spot and provide a safer access out, get them off that intersection.
Okay. I helped develop this project when I was at Samish, so I'll be abstaining from this vote.
And I'm sure council recalls a big part of this was improving that crosswalk there as well.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Short of any other questions, unless someone has some other questions. A move that the city authorized the mayor to execute the updated version of the Interlocal Cooperative Agreement, 22-213-TRN-001, between the City of Anacortes and the Samish Indian Nation.
Second? A motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. McDougal to approve the Interlocal between the city and the Samish Indian Nation as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Hoagland, take the vote, please.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Abstain.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. We're on to item number 6C. This is a temporary access easement, Dyke District 17, and Ms. Swetnam is still up, and this is an action item.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Sorry you have to listen to my croaky voice again, but this was a request that came in from Dyke District 17. They're currently working with the U.S. Corps of Engineers to do a rebuild of the levee on the left bank of the Skagit River. And in order to get their permitting done, they need a temporary access easement to be able to access that portion of the levee. So the Dyke District 17 project, it's Project PL-8499, and it's the levee rehabilitation project on the left bank. They requested per the Corps a temporary access easement. Staff have reviewed and recommended approval, and I did work with the city engineer to make sure that the legal description of the easement area is correct in the version that's in the packet tonight, and it is. So the map is a little bit misleading because there are highlighted sections that are irrelevant, but the area that we're talking about here is Section 8. You can see where my cursor is. That's the water treatment plant, and the city owns this piece of property adjacent to the river. So the city property is Skagit County Parcel Number 21670. It is across Riverbend Road from the water treatment plant. The temporary access easement would grant Dyke District 17 and the Corps access to the property during construction. We did, did talk with Public Works about the potential impacts on access to the water treatment plant, especially with the fact that construction's going to be happening with the old water treatment plant demolition. And we were able to get the Corps to allow language to be included in the easement that clarifies that they won't interfere with access that will be needed by the city's contractors to do that work. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Staff is recommending approval of this easement.
All right. Questions for Ms. Swetnam?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
That language looks good to me, except that what, what will they actually need? What will our contractors need in terms of access to this location for demolition?
Yeah, so I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. I don't think that our contractors at the old water treatment plant site are going to need access to this property at all. We just wanted to make sure, because it's on the other side of Riverbend Road from this, from the water treatment plant site, we just wanted to make sure that they weren't going to do, you know, and, and block the road off or do anything that would impact the access on the other side of the road, so.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, any other, any motions?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougal?
I move to grant Dyke District 17 the easement as presented in the packet, authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second?
A motion by Mr. McDougal, a second by Ms. Hubig to grant the Dyke District 17 easement as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Hoagland, take the vote, please.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up is Item 6D, Interlocal Agreement with the Port of Anacortes for Reciprocal Property Access. Welcome, Mr. Wara, Executive Director of Port of Anacortes. Thanks for being here, but Ms. Swetnam will present.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So thanks for recognizing Mr. Wara as in the audience. So this is a reciprocal property agreement with the port that would allow the city and the port to work together to access each other's property and provide reciprocal support on public works types of projects. So the agreement kind of formalizes what has been informally happening for a lot of years, which is the city and the port work together on a lot of different types of projects. And this agreement provides some structure for that, and, and also some explicit permission to be able to access the other party's property. So the agreement provides a structure where requesting party can submit a request for work. The, the party who receives that request can do that work and then submit a reimbursement request to the other party and add a 10% cost increase for overhead and administration. And it also provides permission to access the other party's property. So some examples of where this type of agreement can be helpful, seasonal snow plowing. Currently, the city's event trailer is parked on the port's, one of the port's lots. The port routinely hosts the city's firework barge for the Fourth of July celebration. There are certainly instances where environmental cleanup projects, one party needs to do sampling on the other's, other's property, and this would allow for that type of access. And it also allows for consolidating construction contracts. And an example that's come up recently where this agreement will be, will be useful to the city, the port is getting ready to do some work on a piece of property adjacent to a city intersection, and they're going to be improving the surface of that area. And, and they've offered to allow their contractor to do some work on the city's intersection, which also needs some improvement. City will reimburse the port for that, save some mobilization costs, and this agreement provides the framework to be able to do that, that type of work. So there are some, some, some risk management considerations, which are important, that are built into this, this agreement. For example, you know, if one party's having a contractor do work on the other's property, there are insurance requirements, so that's spelled out, as well as indemnification for access and work. And the agreement provides the procedures for requesting and performing work, and also for seeking reimbursement and making payment for that work. So staff have reviewed the agreement. I don't know if Mr. Wara has any comments he'd like to make, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Wara, do you want to make any comments? Are you good? Okay. Okay.
Dan Wara, the Executive Director of the Port of Anacortes. I really appreciate the city working with the port and the port working with the city to, to get this done so that we can continue to do great things for our community that we both serve. Thanks, Darcy, working with Holly, our attorney. We reviewed this as a commission last meeting, and our commissioners are all fully of support of this, so thanks for your consideration for this.
Okay, thanks. Council, questions?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I think as a general matter, this all makes sense. However, there is a threshold in it of $300,000, at which point, that's a $300,000 request for work, at which point the city council would need to approve the request for work in writing. And then we would be on the hook for the $300,000 work, right? That's how that operates?
I, I believe so, yes.
So ordinarily, the mayor's contract authority is $45,000, so this would be a substantial increase in that, apparently delegated by virtue of this interlocal agreement. Do I interpret that the same way you do?
Well, so if the city, so if there's a situation where the city's doing the work, then, then the city would be doing the work if it's, you know, snow plowing or something like that. But if it's a situation where the city's going to be contracting for the work, as we would be if it was paving or anything like that, then the contract thresholds would still apply for the contract to do the underlying work. So maybe the approval to, to do the work can, can be accomplished by the mayor, but the underlying contract itself, if it was over $45,000, would still have to come to council.
Would there always be such a contract, or would we rely on the interlocal itself to obligate the city to pay $300,000 to the port for some scope of work?
Yeah, that's a good point. If the port is doing the work, then we would follow these procedures to be able to, to authorize the work. So I think your, your point is well-taken, that there's, that if council feels like that threshold amount needs to harmonize with the mayor's contracting authority, you know, that, that's certainly a change that could be made to the agreement.
Yeah, I, I don't imagine what those projects might be, but, I mean, we are doing some fairly substantially sized infrastructure projects. $300,000 is a lot of money, and it's inconsistent with our other thresholds, so I'm, I'm uncomfortable with, with that provision, which is 4.4.1, and I think that we should revise it before approval.
Any other questions? Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. I would support that also, that change.
All right. Anything else? This is a discussion of possible action.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubig?
I do have a quick question. How is this going to get coded in the budget? I mean, is this something that's going to show up on the consent agenda so that the public can see where the work is happening, since it's not going to be something that's brought to council every time it happens?
Yeah, that's a really great question. It's probably better directed to finance, but I'll do my best. I would think before any payment could be made, there would have to be, you know, that would have to go through the regular invoice approval process. So council would see it, you know, on, in, in the weekly, you know, invoice amounts that come before council.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I am very much in support of this, you know, making note of the point, Mr. Walters- I am very much in support of this, you know, making note of the point Mr. Walters made about it. But beyond that, I do appreciate the work that the city and the port are doing together, you know, for the greater good of our city. I do think that there are some things that we're going to need to work on, and one of the things that I'm hoping that this collaboration can go forward on in such a good way is that as we talk about the closing of the transit shed, we also need to look at what we will do as a city in between the time that whether somebody else brings it or the city does something. But I do think that that's an opportunity for collaboration, because I do believe our city will need it. Short of that, we won't have any spaces for, to have events like we've had already and recruit additional events that can participate and be downtown. So, I think that that's one of the things that will be coming forward for us to be discussing, and hopefully we can find a solution together. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Anything else? I think we'll take a look at the interlocal and bring it back hopefully next week.
Sure. If council is comfortable with the rest of the interlocal, one option might be to make a motion and direct staff to change the threshold amount from 300 to 45,000. Otherwise, we're happy to bring it back next week.
All right. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Walters.
I think bringing it back would be better, because it might be a little bit more complicated than that. Maybe the port wants to leave it at 300,000 on their side.
Happy to do that. Thank you.
All right. Well, council going once, we can, we'll plan on bringing it back next week. Thank you. And in the meantime, we appreciate the cooperation and not towing our trailer away or, so, all that good stuff. Thanks. Okay, next up is Item 6E, Resolution 3125, declaring emergency and waiving state competitive bidding requirements for repair of a 36-inch water transmission line. And Henry coming up for one more turn at the council. Mr. Hash.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Mayor and Council, Henry Hash, Public Works. Since my last night, they left me a real easy one. I don't need to read it. Basically, we have two main transmission lines that serves the water to 56,000 people. When there is a leak or a break in one of them, there is no time to go through the process. The immediate thing is to find a way to repair it. Basically, that's what happened. We shut that water main down, and then we routed through the other one, but we couldn't take the risk of living for so long. So, we hired Welch Brothers, the contractor, to fix it, not to exceed $250,000. The line is repaired, and the cost's going to be considerably less than 250,000.
Yeah. I think that's the important thing, is, you know, you had to come up with a number just to make sure, and expected to be considerably less. We don't know what that number is yet.
Yes, sir. We don't know, but going to be probably maybe less than 70,000.
Any questions for Mr. Hash, council?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Hash. Is this the new, is Telegraph Slough, is that near the water treatment plant? Or these, is this where the two, where we have the new 36-inch water line and the old one?
I think that's the old one. Is that correct, Tim? Yes.
Yeah, it's the old one that broke? Okay, good news. Thank you.
In fact, for your future budget discussions, this is one line that we want to analyze and consider what needs to be done so these things don't happen again. Yes.
The southeast side of the twin bridges.
Correct.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I thought I'd try to ask, since this is your last presentation, some deeply probing questions, to rough you off a little bit, but, you know, again, unless there's any other questions that we have? Are there any other questions? Okay. I move that Resolution 3125 be approved, declaring an emergency and waiving state competitive bidding requirements for the public work project titled 36-Inch Water Transmission Line Emergency Repair pursuant to RCW 39.04.280.
Second. Okay. A motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Carter to approve Resolution 3125. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think the resolution is completely on point and appropriate, and emergency repair is appropriate, but I think this incident and quite a few others in our other distribution lines should lead us to believe that we need to be investing more in repair and replacement of these lines before they burst. We have a program that does that, and it seems like the evidence is pointing toward we need to be putting more money into that program on an annual basis, and thus, we should be careful with our water funds, because some of those will be retail system costs paid for by only the 10% of the system that our retail customers use, and additional expenses will affect water rates. I also understand that this leak was not detected by our fiber-based water detection system.
Correct.
Because it can't reach all portions of the line, where, for example, it apparently exits the line and goes around a valve or whatever other reason. So, there are limitations to that as well. Unfortunately, we discovered this leak pretty quickly, evidently, after it occurred.
Yeah, I think it was pretty obvious. Yeah, thank you for that point, and you will see, council will see some major waterline contracts coming very soon for, to get ahead of these leaks. Okay, so, any additional discussion? Got a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Carter for Resolution 3125. Mr. Hoagland.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. Next up is Item 6F, Resolution 3126, Lodging Tax Award to Oyster Run. This is an action item, and Mr. Coleman will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. So, this is hopefully a pretty easy one for the council to review tonight. There's been a lot of discussion about the 2023 Oyster Run potentially of being canceled over concerns of the organizers about costs, particularly for fire and police service to the event. So, after several members of city staff and council have worked with the organizers of the Oyster Run, we was able to work with them to apply for LTAC funding, so to cover certain costs associated with the event. The LTAC committee did have a meeting to discuss it, and then after we received the application from the Oyster Run Committee, the LTAC committee unanimously voted to recommend that the city council approve up to $10,000 in LTAC funds to the Oyster Run organizers to pay for police and fire department overtime costs above $5,500. So, the organization is committed to paying at least $5,500 towards the costs of police and fire service, and to help make sure that they are able to put the event on this year, LTAC committed to up to $10,000 beyond that $5,500 to pay for those specific costs. So, today, there's a recommended motion for the council to distribute those LTAC funds.
Okay, and I appreciate the LTAC committee members are volunteers, and I appreciate them getting together. And Mr. Young, LTAC Chair, do you have anything you wanted to say?
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Yes, I just wanted to echo that it really was a community effort at coming together, listening to all of the sides of what was missing, what was needed, how much help, you know, and it just really brought forward all of the stakeholders in this thing, and it was just a good meeting. We came together, we got all the truth about the stories and how we could help, and we found that there was a way for us to work together, and it benefited the city and the, you know, the businesses that were here in the community as a whole. It was something that had been coming for so many years, and so, we came together and we voted unanimously, as Mr. Coleman said. But it was just a wonderful feeling of accomplishment for our city and to have something continued that's been a big part of who we are and what we've done. And so, we were, the goal was to address those concerns, as well as help the organization, and then also, at the same time, you know, sort of structure what we were intending to do at LTAC and how we go forward from here. So, yeah, I'm very much supportive of it, and again, I want to thank, you know, the businesses, Mr. Walters, as well as so many others, and the mayor and everybody else coming together to think about it, talk about it, bring it forward such that we had a clear view of what was ahead and then how we move forward from here. So, thank you.
Thanks. And I was going to make a public service announcement about the LTAC process, but then I couldn't remember, is it October, when we, typically, we do this once a year, so this is outside the normal flow, but sometime in the fall or late summer, we solicit applications for lodging tax funds that are collected by our hotels and motels and overnight accommodations in Anacortes, and then the committee gets together with multiple meetings and evaluates the process for these tourism funds. Do you, when's the timeframe, Mr. Young, for the normal process for LTAC applications?
Yeah. There is a structure, but we've been very generous in the past about how we were trying to meet the needs of the community. So, we're sort of reining that in just a little bit, and, but I don't have that exact date. I'm sure Mr. Coleman says.
So, I do have that information. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee has opened already the request period, so it is possible for organizations to submit applications for Lodging Tax Advisory Committee funding, and we are closing that in early September this year, so that that gives the LTAC time to actually review it before the end of the year.
There you go. It's open for your 2024 lodging tax request. That was the PSA I was trying to make. Mr. Young.
Mayor Miller, if appropriate, I think that there is just a question or two, Mr. Walters, if I'm not putting you on the spot, about the language, just a couple of tweaks, but the essence of which goes forward. Am I correct, Mr. Walters?
Mr. Walters.
Yes. Thank you. So, when we had, initially had these discussions, what we had talked about was, and what we did in 2016, which was the only other time that I'm aware of that Oyster Run event has been funded by tourism promotion dollars, what we did was, we allocated $10,000 to the city itself, which foregoes the need to have a contract with the Oyster Run. And in the alternative, we would sign a contract with Oyster Run, we would cut Oyster Run a check, they would then cut a check to us. And so, we could theoretically simplify this, maybe with some changes to the language, which I have prepared, but also, the language as presented here in the final sentence in the ordinance, or in the resolution, says that police and fire department overtime costs above 5,500 and not to exceed 10,000 be authorized. And I think that introduces a little bit of vagueness. So, what I propose is that we clarify that we are providing $10,000 in tourism promotion dollars, and that we can charge the balance of the overtime cost to the Oyster Run up to the $5,500, which is, I think, what, and I mentioned to Mr. Young, I think what we meant to express. So, I propose that that final line read, "Now therefore be it resolved by Anacortes City Council that the use of $10,000 in tourism promotion funds is authorized for program year 2023 to cover the costs of the City of Anacortes Police and Fire Department overtime for the Oyster Run," and that the city may charge the balance of overtime costs to the Oyster Run up to, but not exceeding, $5,500. The point here to simple.
That doesn't sound exactly, maybe I'm missing what you're, what you're saying. So, the fees were expected to be about $15,000?
500.
500. So, we wanted to capture, they're very willing to and happy to spend the $5,500 to cover the first cost, and then LTAC committed to up to $10,000 beyond that. So, should the police and fire costs be more than $15,500, the organizers would still be on the hook for anything above that.
Well, and a problem with our process here has been, I guess, the unpredictability of the police and fire overtime.
Agreed.
So, one of my objectives is to take the amount that it was last year and cap it for this year, so that we're not talking about an unpredictable expense, but something that is predictable and is consistent with last year. Last year, it was $15,500, and in previous years, it had been 10,000, as we heard Chief Floyd say, "The police have kept their expenses pretty constant." However, fire was a new expense evidently last year, and is how they ended up at $15,500. So, the two points here are, one, can we just pay ourselves the 10,000 instead of signing a contract to have them receive our check and then cut it back to us, which is consistent with what we did in 2016? And then, two, can we cap it at $15,500?
Again, it's also consistent on how we do all LTAC contracts. I mean, all these contracts are invoiced to the city, and then we pay them out. So, this is, this would be inconsistent with our LTAC contracts, so I'd be a little concerned there, but I'm willing to obviously try it.
But in this case, they're paying a city invoice to begin with.
No, that's how LTAC contracts work. They're fairly cumbersome. I get it.
No, I mean, in this case, the city is sending the invoice for the overtime.
Gotcha.
We then send, they then send an invoice to us for the money for the overtime, and then they send another. There's a lot of complication that could be simplified in this.
Mayor Miller, can I add one thing?
Okay, Mr. Young, and then Ms. Moulton.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Moulton, for being patient. You know, at the end of the day, what's very clear here is that we are supporting this and moving this forward. I want no misunderstanding about that. All this really is about is the best way to handle that, but at the end of the day, this is a project that the LTAC committee has unanimously supported. What we're discussing here is language, and then how best to get that money to the very people. So, I just wanted that up, as they used to say in the South where I'm from, from the giddy up, such that there's no misunderstanding at all. Thank you.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. So, I appreciate Mr. Walters' point of not, because the Oyster Run's going to pay the city, then it seems like to me it would simplify it that we just pay ourselves. But as far as the 5,500, I mean, wasn't the intent for them to pay us 5,500, then we pay up to 15,500, or we pay up to 10,000? So, then we're at 15,500, but if there's another $200 out there, then the Oyster Run pays that on top. So, it just ensures that we get, have the commitment from the Oyster Run that they give us $5,500 in addition to the 10,000 we essentially give ourselves. So, that's different than Mr. Ryan's, what do I call you, Mr. Ryan, sorry, Mr. Walters' proposal, right?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters?
Yes, yes. And so, if that is the intent of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, then I would modify this language that up to $10,000 in tourism promotion funds is authorized, and delete the "up to" and "not exceeding" language from the last line.
Okay, so, because presumably it could be less, because we don't know what the overtime is, so I'm in favor of keeping it that way, the way the LTAC committee intended.
Okay, so, I'm kind of waiting for a motion from a council member about whether we accept the language here or the language that's proposed by Mr. Walters, or a modified version of either one of the, I think we're all just talking about the last line of the resolution. Ms. Walters?
Well, so, my initial problem with this is, I think, the lack of clarity in the final line of the resolution. But if we, if the Oyster Run is... final line of the resolution. But if we, if the Oyster Run is committed to $5,500 of payment, which I know that they are, I think the only missing link here, based on Mr. Coleman's explanation of the interpretation, is the requirement for us to enter into a superfluous contract for this and the absence of any kind of limit on how much we will be charging the Oyster Run for overtime. So, I would like to see an amendment here to limit that total cost to the Oyster Run of overtime, so that they have some certainty about what their expenses are going to be. And they've committed to $5,500, and I think that's reasonable. So, I would propose, number one, that we amend the title as shown here so that it doesn't require a tourism promotion contract, but it's as a resolution authorizing tourism promotion funds. And then, number two, that instead of amending the last line as shown here, that we simply say the total cost to the Oyster Run for overtime will not exceed $5,500 or will be $5,500, so that we accomplish that cap here in the resolution.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
No, you know, again, I defer part of this to Mr. Coleman and, you know, in the team as to language and what's important, what's needed. Part of this is LTAC function and part of this is city function. And those two are kind of, you know, are separate things in the sense that LTAC can commit to the funds up to as the parameters we set, and then it's the onus is on the city council to either prove it or not. And in this case, if there is not any fundamental big change, given the language that Mr. Walters has concerned about, we're ending up with the same thing. Because I think that the agreement that we entered into was that, you know, I mean, the Oyster Run felt that they could handle up to about, you know, they could handle $5,500 and felt that $10,000 would be kind of a minimal that they, we could move forward on. And so, we reached an agreement around that. And so, LTAC decided that we could support up to that amount. Now, how we get it to them, I think in the best way for us to get it to them and how we do this is really, I think, a city function versus an LTAC committee function. And so, if as a city function, we believe that it's the best way and the more clarity to approach it in the way that Mr. Walters is suggesting, then I think that we do it. You know, it's okay, as long as the outcome is the same, unless there's a fundamental reason why that language would not work. Am I making myself clear?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing a couple of different things that need to be changed in here. One is to alter it to, instead of being a contract with the Oyster Run Committee, it's kind of, would be more of a contract with ourselves to commit to paying $10,000 for anything over 15, or anything over $5,500. The other aspect that is not envisioned in this and in anything that LTAC has any purview over is the amount that actually is charged. So, that would definitely be a city council, fire, and police discussion to determine now if the police and fire would then limit it to just $15,000 in fees. So, that would need to be figured out. Would they, you know, police terminate service at a certain hour or whatever, or how you would limit it to $15,500? I don't know how that would work. But the city council, I'm sure, has the authority to figure that out.
Again, the mechanics of this resolution is for the council to approve the LTAC $10,000 of funds.
Absolutely.
So, how we get there, you know, I, I'm waiting for council to give me the language here, so we can...
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
I would like to move to approve the resolution with the new title proposed by Mr. Walters, but with the rest of it the same. Second?
Okay. Thank you for the motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Ms. Hubig to approve Resolution 3126 with the amended title that reads, "A Resolution Authorizing Tourism Promotion Funds for the Oyster Run." And any additional discussion? Ms. Hubig?
Thank you. I will be voting to support this, but I would also like us to take this moment to remember that this was a decision that was made back in December to say no. We've decided, assuming, say yes, since the motions have been made, I will be saying yes to this. But I want to encourage our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee members to take a long, hard look at what the applications are going to look like this year. As has been mentioned several times in our council meetings, in our committee meetings, we're losing the Port Event Center. We're losing it, a very affordable event center. All, not all. Many of the applications that are going to come in are going to come in at a higher cost. And should the Lodging Tax Committee consider possibly not taking 25% and setting it aside? What other events, and I hate the slippery slope argument, I am not suggesting that right now, but if this is happening to us now and it is important enough for us to save this event, literally, they said that they would cancel it. This is us saving this event. What else needs to be considered when we have this conversation starting in October, November, December of this year about next year? Thank you.
Mayor Miller? Mr. Walters?
I think Councilmember Hubig's point is extremely well taken, but also that the foundation of the problem here is maybe that the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee looks at this slice of the world, and that is simply the allocation of tourism promotion money, and doesn't, and doesn't have the authority to look at all the other aspects of events. So, as an example, when I went to law school in my first year, midway through the year, the University of California decided to increase tuition, even though we'd already paid it. Basically said, "Don't come back second semester unless you pay this increase." All of the professional student, school students and the entire UC system sued the University of California, and we won. Judge said it was unconscionable to do that. And similarly here, we've got entirely within our control how much we're going to charge for overtime. And so, it doesn't have to be in this resolution, but we do need to resolve the question of how much are we going to charge? What is the level of certainty we can provide an event in advance so that they can budget around it? Because, you know, this $15,500 that we charged last year is fully half of the Oyster Run's event promotion budget or event budget. So, without that predictability, they decided that they couldn't hold the event, not necessarily because of the cost. Cost is a factor, but the unpredictability is another really important factor. So, I'm okay with the motion as proposed, with the edit as proposed, but we do need to still resolve the question of total costs that we charge for overtime.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
You know, again, I won't belabor this point, but just echoing the comments of my fellow council members, you know, these are things that, you know, is well within our purview as the legislative side of city operation. And I do agree that there are things that we need to begin to address because there are going to be some changes to be coming up that we would need to look deeper at. So, I look forward to the discussion. But as far as the LTAC committee is concerned, we have done our due diligence. We've moved forward expeditiously. We have unanimously felt that this was in the best interest of our city and the event. And so, with this, you know, very much supportive of this resolution. And those additional questions, we can begin to answer later. But I agree with Ms. Hubig. It is something that we need to, at some point in the near future, have a discussion about. Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubig with the amended title of Resolution 3126. Mr. Hoagland, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much, and no further business before the council. I will adjourn the meeting. Thanks.